Good evening, I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, January 23rd. Please rise for a moment of silence. We'll have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laughin?
Here.
Leturno? Maroon?
Here.
Morgenstein?
Here.
Chortel?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Zandry?
Here.
Chairman Savoni?
Here. Councilor Leturno did advise me that he is ill and has opted not to share his germs with us. On to item three, the consent agenda.
I move we approve and accept consent agenda items A through K.
Moved seconded by Councilor Chortel, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, here none, the consent agenda passes. Item four, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. Item five, is the public question and answer period. Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. I know you're going to be discussing the comprehensive report, whatever, budget. I don't know if this is going to come up, I assume you're looking to see how you're going along and balancing budgets and so forth. But a couple of things to keep in mind when budget season's coming up now. There's two items where, two areas where money can be had or should be. One is the John Street lease that the town gives to the electric division and gives them hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. Um, we just saw that the electric division has quite a surplus that they're able to, um, give money back or keep the rates low because they have so much money in surplus. Whereas the town is going to be looking for money. This is money that the town actually owns that land, you guys know about it, you have the lease that was done last year on it. But because you guys oversee the electric division, you can determine how money's spent. You can have that money come back to the town because it is town money. You just decide to discreet, uh, have discretion to send it to the electric division to offset some of their costs, it should be for the town to offset some of our costs. It would work out better that way. Secondly, um, as you see now, the new tax laws, some major universities, not even major universities, some small universities now are going to be taxed. And, um, so tax laws are changing on some of these not-for-profits. Uh, one area that the town has a deal with or a pilot program with that comes up from the eighties would be Ashler Village, where the town of Wallingford only collects a percentage of the taxes that they owe versus everybody else pays a hundred percent. They, from what I understand, only pay their tax on the government portion, which is less than forty percent of what the assessed value would be. And if I'm wrong, Mr. Boz, you could correct me in any of that?
You're, you're correct.
So essentially if they owed a hundred, if their taxes were a hundred dollars, they're paying less than forty cents on the dollar. Where if I owed a hundred dollars, I would pay forty dollars. I would pay the hundred dollars where Ashler would pay forty dollars. Because they're not paying the educational component of their taxes. So in these times where the federal government is now looking at that, the state government is now starting to tax hospitals to some degree, which is not-for, not-for-profit hospitals in the state. Um, wouldn't this be the time to be in discussion at least with Ashler to see what they could do to help the town for the education budget because you all saw this morning's paper or, um, have access to what's going on Board of Ed? They're asking for X number of percent increase, I know that doesn't mean they're getting it, but those are millions of dollars more. So the town's going to have to come up with those dollars somewhere or some of the money. So hopefully the Board, the council will look at those two items to, um, at least help the town people from the rise in taxes that we see every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morgenstein.
Good evening, Larry Morgenstein, South Main Street. Uh, through the chair to the mayor, please.
Go ahead.
Uh, at your State of the Town address, uh, you talked about an addition of fifty jobs over this past year, is that correct? Or fifty businesses, I'm sorry.
Yes, new businesses moved into town over the past year.
And the quote was that that's the same amount over the last three years?
I believe it was, there were at least fifty over the past three years.
And further, uh, do we know how many jobs came in with those businesses? Do we look into that?
I don't have any detail on employment, no.
Okay, and then a follow-up question is, we know how many businesses have come in in the last year. Do we know how many businesses moved out?
I don't have figures on that.
Does anybody keep track of that?
Uh, offhand, I don't know.
So how does knowing fifty new businesses coming into town really tell us anything?
It tells us that fifty businesses decided that Wallingford was a good place to locate and invest in and chose to come to Wallingford. So regardless of any other statistics, it stands for itself. There are fifty business entities that have chosen to relocate or locate in Wallingford and become part of our business community.
With respect, I think while that may be true, it gives us a very incomplete picture. You would think that knowing how many jobs businesses coming in create would be a good thing. Not every business is equal to one that leaves, one that comes in. So how do we evaluate what our growth is, where we're going over the last few years if we only have? It's like Mr. Boz reporting only on our revenue but not what we spend on a budget. It just doesn't, it's, it's a very incomplete picture to have just what comes in but not have a contrast to fill in that picture.
Well, I think it's, my comments also mentioned that we don't expect the grant list to grow at all. In fact, it probably will, uh, contract, uh, primarily because of Bristol Myers leaving. Uh, that says something right there. If the grand list isn't growing, then, uh, it's good that we have fifty new businesses, but it's not expanding the taxable property in town. So that is a measure of, we're trying to hold our own, but we're certainly not, uh, will not, we're not expecting to be receiving new revenue as a result of an increase in the grand list.
I would just encourage the council and, and the EDC to start looking at that. I, I just find that having additional information would be helpful in terms of knowing who's coming in, who's leaving, what the reasons might be, how many jobs are coming in, how many jobs come out. It just seems that we're missing an opportunity to get a better picture of what's happening and we might target better when we know what's coming in. Thank you.
Mr. Chardulo.
Good evening, Paul Chardulo.
Address?
Chairman, uh, I'd like to congratulate you.
For the record, your address? For, for the record, your street address?
Street address, Topey Berry Drive.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, I want to congratulate you, I want to congratulate the mayor, Mr. Mayor, and all of the councilors for your, uh, very successful, uh, political campaign this last, uh, campaign season for the seat that you're sitting in. So congratulations on your, uh, your wins. Um, I know we're going to be talking about the audit report, which has been the subject for a lot of discussion in recent, recent months. But what I wanted to do before we get into that and maybe once you get into it, we can focus on this particular area. I want to see if you and I, Mr. Chairman, uh, are in agreement on a point.
Good luck.
In May of last year, at the, during the budget meeting, uh, just before you approved the budget, I recommended to the council, cancel the tax increase because, um, I didn't think we needed the money. And that was based on the audit reports and went back over the last five years. And what it showed is that very consistently, the estimates that are provided to the council by the town are overinflated on the expense side and underinflated on the revenue side. That in turn justifies the tax increase. And, but once the year transpired, and we go back and look at the audit reports, we find that there's a large surplus. We've underspent expenses, we've come in higher on revenue. And, uh, it turns out we, we never needed the, uh, the tax increases. There's five years worth of history of that. Now, you and I didn't agree at that time, I asked to cancel it and no one would put it on the agenda. But at that time, I also, I, I said that I felt that the current submission for this year's budget, the one, the year we're in right now, was inflated based on that history. And, uh, so we didn't have agreement, we went through with the business as usual. We now have the results of that. We have the results of this past fiscal year. Now, I believe that what it shows, and the audit will confirm, maybe I'm wrong, and hopefully we'll talk about that tonight, that on the expense side, we came in three point four million dollars under budget. And on the revenue side, we came in one point one million over the revenue budget. So we've had a continuation of that trend. So my question to you is, have you looked at this report? Do you agree with me or do you still think I'm, I'm making a mistake, which I may be making, I don't know?
Let me start by saying that you're certainly entitled to your opinion and your own analysis of the presentation. As I read the whole report, we ended up with a deficit last year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the short answer to your very long question is that I don't think you and I agree.
Okay, well, I think you're wrong, only this time I, I have the report. Would you agree that if the audit report confirms this, that I am correct and you're incorrect?
I think that your opinion is based upon an oversimplification of the report and it doesn't take into consideration all the factors in the audit. And I think Mr. Boz will talk about that.
Okay, I look forward to hearing that because, uh, and I call your attention to pages sixty-six through seventy-two, which covers the budget, not the whole audit, but the budget. And hopefully we'll get this resolved because this is a very big issue. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Two quick things then, this comprehensive report in the past has been put on the website. Is it going to, the new one going to be put on the website? It is already, there's seventeen ones on there? Okay, it wasn't on there last week, so, okay. Oh, it went there yesterday?
Yeah, if I may, Bob.
Thank you.
It was brought to my attention by, uh, actually Barbara Thompson. We had a, um, electronic version sent to us by our auditors and unbeknownst to me, it was, um, I don't know. I know about it. I couldn't even bring it up on my computer either when it was brought to me. So I had them send us another, another try at it and it was posted yesterday. I was able to bring it up today, so that's, that's on me. I was out a few days last week and I, I did not notice that it was not.
I checked last week, it wasn't there and that's, so Ms. Thompson says it was there, it's up there, it's great, thank you.
It's up, it's up there now and it's correct.
Perfect. One quick question then for, I don't know who does it and because I see all this Martin Luther King celebration stuff on the walls, um, which celebrates diversity in our society, which is a wonderful thing. Um, when you come into the town hall at Christmas time, there's no other symbols, no Kwanzaa symbols, no Jewish symbols, no any other religions or cultures signified when you walk into town hall. I was just wondering if, you know, for a diverse society as we are in town here, it would be nice to see that, especially for the children who walk in and don't see symbols representing their own cultures. And it would be nice, maybe next, I don't know who does it, but I assume mayor, this is your, you know, you know, that maybe next year you could see Kwanzaa lights and so forth there and maybe a menorah or some type of something that would represent for more diversity. Muslim symbol of some type, just so people know that their cultures are being represented here in town. Thank you.
To speak for everyone, we, we cannot have religious symbols. So, uh, none of the decorations to my knowledge are religious symbols. Um, it's a seasonal, secular, uh, celebration, Santa, Christmas trees, whatever, that is not religious. So anything that goes into religion, we would not be able to, uh, display either on our grounds or inside the building.
All right, so Kwanzaa is not a religious holiday whatsoever. It is a celebration. Hanukkah is not a religious ceremony, it's a celebration. Mr. Testa, it's not a religious holiday whatsoever. It's not even in the Bible, it's just a commemoration of a battle that took place with the Syrians two thousand one hundred years ago. That's all it is. It's not a holiday whatsoever. It's not a, not a religious holiday such as Yom Kippur or Rosh Hashanah or something of that nature. Um, uh, so those types of things would be nice to see for other cultures so they're not left out for their children when they see something. It just makes it more welcoming as, you know, Martin Luther King said, or I don't know what he said, but I'm not going to quote him. But, you know, inclusion is much nicer than exclusion. So thank you, have a good day. So you could talk to whoever, Mr. Mayor, you want the ACLU, I'm sure they can give you some guidelines. Thank you. Jewish member of the audience said to me, dreidels are not a religious symbol. Thank you.
Anyone else? There appearing none, I close the public question and answer period, move on to item six, which is a discussion of the June thirtieth, twenty seventeen Comprehensive Annual Financial Report Summary. This is Councilor Chortel's item, but, uh, before I give the floor to Councilor Chortel, Mr. Boz, do you have any introductory comments you'd like to offer or would you like to just submit to the grilling?
Did you say constructive comments, I think? Was that a?
I said introductory.
Oh, okay. Uh, I can go over the, uh, the, the summary if you'd like and then open it up to questions. It's, it's really up to you folks what you would like me to do, I'm, I'm prepared to maybe just do a quick review if you'd like.
If, if you could do a brief review that would.
If Mr. Chortel would just like to ask questions or whatever, it's, it's up to you folks, I'm, I'm here for you.
Well, since you're not diving into your introduction, I'm going to let Councilor Chortel start.
Well, if you'd like, it's only about a five minutes if you'd.
Jim, it's never only five minutes. I mean, come on, man. I'm not trying to be that, you know, come on. It's up to you, if you want to give, I mean, I, I think.
I'm feeling, I'm feeling slanted.
We're just going to start with questions, I think all of our questions will encompass probably, you probably would answer some of them, but I think we all have different, right? If you don't mind, we'll just.
That's, I do not mind at all, it's, uh, it's, it's your meeting, sir.
We'll jump right into it and, um, so, uh, my intention with this agenda item was simply that throughout the year, when budget comes up, outside of the actual budget season, this audit is held up as the source of truth. And so I just felt since it was kind of hot off the presses, it might as well have it on the agenda to talk about my own, you know, my own view. Just where I'm coming from in general is that I feel lucky living in Wallingford and that we're not issuing supplemental tax bills as our communities are. So I want to start by saying that. Um, but I do have some questions related both to the audit and to your, your, your cover memo. So I guess in no particular order, uh, in your cover memo, uh, which is, which summarized the audit on page, I guess it's page three, under General Fund Budget Comparisons, uh, the last paragraph taught, reviews the actual expenditures versus what was budgeted and how we, we came in, we didn't spend as much as we thought we would and you have some things listed and, and I was just curious. I did the math, um, you know, it was three point eight million that we fell short. The numbers there didn't get me to that number, I did find it in the audit. I don't have the page number, but I did find more in the audit, but I, that got me to two point four million. So I'm still, I'm just trying to get to that number, like what didn't we spend? Obviously there's pennies in every account maybe don't get spent, but I mean, are there any big ticket items you can point beyond what's in the memo?
What the, what the summary is, uh, I know it's a, it's a four-page, uh, note, so it's hard to call it a summary. So if the chairman wants to make fun of me again, he can for a four-page brief. Uh, but I, coming from an attorney, I'll take that as a, a compliment. Um, anyway, um, though those items are just the main ticket items, councilmen, with regards to that. It wasn't meant to be a regurgitation of all the variances which you have on pages, I believe, uh, sixty-five through seventy-two. Um, those were just sort of the big ticket items that, uh, just, just for the, uh, the, uh, and at the average folks who want to read this to get a, to get the gist of what happened.
Okay. Um, I know at page eleven of the audit, it, there's a, this is a small thing, but it just struck me and I want to make sure I'm reading it correctly. At the bottom of page eleven, it talks about open positions and it referenced five in your office that are open. And I didn't know, I know that the electric division falls under your jurisdiction, I didn't know if like, is that literally in your, under you, there are five open spots, like you have half a team right now? Because if I looked at the.
We've, yes.
Work chart, you only have five direct reports.
That's correct.
Okay, that's, is that an issue?
We reduced, we reduced, um, um, in the, controlled those four divisions about five positions uh, in the last three or four budget years. And I believe we're down seven or eight since I've gotten here twelve or thirteen budgets ago. Three of them we figured we, we are never going to ever ask for again. Uh, two of them, it would be tremendously helpful, um, uh, with regards to some of the work processing. Uh, and two of them frankly were, but, but we have not asked for them in the, in the budget that we're currently in now, seventeen, eighteen. And with, um, just preliminarily looking at the way things are shaking out possibly for the upcoming budget, which you folks are going to be looking at soon, uh, we probably won't be requesting them in the eighteen, nineteen, uh, area. But there's other positions in other departments as well.
I understood, yeah, that understood. Um, and it said in there that we, we don't budget, we aren't budgeting for these positions.
Correct.
So these open spots, do they hit the budget anywhere or they're projected?
No.
There's nowhere and no calculation, okay.
Unless they, uh, let me, let me rephrase, if, if, unless they become open during the year and they're not filled and maybe that department takes some time and, and evaluates whether or not they need it.
Okay, thank you. So the, uh, looking at the, the general fund balance, we talk about the unassigned balance, the eighteen point six five nine million. And of that sixteen point two oh seven million is retained for the credit rating. Is that, again, that is what, ten percent of our budget, where does that come from again?
Approximately ten percent, it's what, um, it's what is thought of in the, um, in the industry as, as a safe, strong margin.
And, but that's, that's basically a choice on our part.
That's correct.
There's no legal, you know, it's not like it was, it was an ordinance or.
That's correct.
We could, okay.
Yeah, you're correct.
Okay.
The other items are bound by decisions that the council and or, or actually that the council has made uh, to reserve and utilize funds for, um, the current year's budget appropriations in force, including the schools one percent fund as we've spoken about many times. Um, encumbrances that were not yet, um, completed at the year end, things of that nature. So they're either restricted legally and or self-imposed restrictions. And then the net of all of that is what is unassigned, we call free fund balance if you will. Free for the council to utilize going as of June seventeenth, uh, as of June thirtieth.
So theoretically, if the council wanted to set aside a million dollars for downtown parking or for community pool, I don't know, pick, you know, pick a project, would we have to do an ordinance to do that? Like if we wanted to say, okay, because I'm reading in the definitions of assigned fund balance, unassigned, committed, there's a couple, in here, there's a couple of ways where it talks about the council's authority. What is our authority there? Do we have the, any ability to do that or would you have to initiate?
If you wished, if, if you wished, if the council wished to appropriate a million dollars for any such purpose, uh, you would go the same process any other department would, make the request. Uh, and of course, let's say you wouldn't spend it yet because you're, you're going to try to build it up. Uh, if those, that million dollars does get approved, that's authorized, it goes to the mayor's office first and to you folks, then what would happen is that at year end, we would include that in the listing of the appropriations in force, which you folks would then, we use the term carry forward into the new budget year, um, into the new fiscal year to be used. And that would move it out of the unassigned up to the assigned fund balance. In other words, uh, out of that free funds designated for what you folks wanted to use it for.
But it has to be, in that process you just described, it has to be approved by the mayor at some point?
I believe, I believe that's what the charter says, it goes through the mayor's, the, the office of the mayor and then through the, and then to the council for approval.
Okay, because I'm just, let me just read, because he's definite, and I'm sorry, because I was.
Oh, that's, unless it's a budget, unless it's a budget item, I'm sorry.
Okay.
My assumption was that you were coming during the middle of the year.
No, no, I meant during.
During the budget season, oh, yeah. If it's a budget request, it's just like every other budget request. You put it in there, if, if, if the mayor agrees with it or not, he leaves it in, he cuts it or he reduces it.
We, we.
Comes back to you.
Yeah.
It comes back to you folks, that's right, I'm sorry, I.
No, that's okay.
Thought we were talking mid-year type.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
That would be like any other line item through the budget process.
Okay.
An item like that can be part of budget discussions in the creation of the budget. I mean, it doesn't require any special treatment one way or another during, after a budget is approved, then, then you fall into the procedural items, but in the creation of a budget, well, it's like anything else. It's a matter of the motions and, and what is adopted.
Thank you. Um, I think my last question is around, so around the assigned fund balance, which is the amount that we use to balance the budget from the general, from the surplus. I know you hate.
Past reserves, yep.
Um, I know, you know, it said its highest, I mean, if you look at page one hundred and twelve, which gives the look back, you know, through the past year, it's at seven point three million, which is pretty relative to previous budgets.
Four point something.
Yeah, it's a little higher, I mean, it's higher, it's two million higher than last year's budget. It's, you know, it would, in the, a few years ago, it dipped below five million. I guess my question is, is number one, I would think that we try to wean ourselves off that if we could.
Yes, you're correct. I agree with you more. We, when I got here, we had been using, uh, and I'm, please, I'm, I'm not one that says it's, it's the previous folks doing, but it was here when I got here, the town was using seven point five million dollars to budget their balance, uh, to balance their budget. And obviously that, that leaves you in a sort of a precarious position because what happens if everything in that budget comes true? That means you have seven million dollars, seven point five million dollars less than the reserves for your upcoming budget. So what I did over the last twelve or thirteen budgets is little by little to wean us off of that. And it might have been a hundred thousand here, two hundred thousand dollars a year, working it in gradually over time. So it doesn't really, uh, and that, it, it adversely affects something. We do usually reduction of expenditures, uh, maybe a tad more of a mill rate increase, but usually a combination of the two. Coming up to the budget year that we're currently in now, we were down to, I believe, four point two million or four point three, and I beg your pardon if I'm off, uh, four point two or four point three million. But this year, we utilized some of the reserves that we had been, um, earning over the last decade or twenty years maybe to try to offset the, uh, the blow thrown upon us by the state, um, grant reductions. Um, and that amount that we utilized is approx. And that amount that we utilized is approximately what the state hit us. We're at the budget time when on May tenth or May eleventh, when we had a jump and you guys had a, you folks on the council had ultimately adopt a budget that evening, that's about where we were in state reductions. And again, I think you hit the nail on the head without having to have some of the draconian measures that many municipalities took, especially in the school area. So we've been able to buffer that by a little bit of time, which is what your reserves are really for. But it is my intention, and we'll be talking about this again, I'm sure, this spring, to try to wean us off that again, going forward to the next three years, five years, seven years, ten years, again, unless the state throws another massive hit at us. And it's a combination, and I I hear folks, and believe me, I I am not someone who loves, I'm not the first guy in his tax office to pay his taxes. I'm not the first, and I, my taxes have in the town that I live in, which is almost mirror to Wallingford, are about twelve percent higher than Wallingford's. And you know, I'm not crazy about it, you know, but and believe me, I, it's not my goal to ever say, okay, well, you know, Wallingford's going to get a tax increase of X. I've never tried to fit a percentage tax increase to to fit it into the budget. It's 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 the process is the same everywhere. You folks, nine of yous behind that desk, ten the fellow to my right, are going to determine the service levels, and then I try to give you folks options and how to how to deal with it. And I know that sounds oversimplistic, and it might be Finance Director Shortell to State who would probably be angry if we're trying to oversimplify, but that's basically what I believe my job is, and to defend our our reserves and 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 our our balance sheet as best we can, because we did need it, and you know, I don't think anybody was anticipating some of the cuts that the state of Connecticut came through with this year. Could have been a little worse, some some good representation, you know, by 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 our delegation, and delegations all over the state really helped mitigate, you know, what was about a three million dollar hit. So but it is, we, I would be seriously looking at reducing some of that dependence on that coming, you know, with this, whether or not it's be able to come in this eighteen nineteen budget, we're losing a million and a half dollars from 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 Bristol Myers alone. That's what the mayor, I believe, was referring to a few moments ago. So with that, and right now, really no indication from the state as to where they're going. I wish I could get you to some type of ballpark, but I can't. But I'd like to start working on that next budget, but I don't know if it's going to be possible. We'll we'll look and see, obviously.
Thank you. Last question for me, philosophical question, maybe it's for the mayor more than you, I don't know, but, and this is the absolute wrong time to be asking the question, I know that upfront. Can that number, the general fund number, the numbers that it's at twenty-seven million right now, can that ever be too high?
Can that ever
Philosophically, is there ever a point where you'd say, we have too much money in the bank, it's the people's money, we need to reinvest it or give it back? I mean,
I don't know if the mayor wants the answer, but I'll I'll just chime in first. I think you got to get to the point where you don't want to tax your businesses out of town, I and the residents as well. I certainly, I'm a resident, and I paid my lot of Wallingford, but I pay property taxes too. But there's the silent, and I, some of the veterans up there, you know, you've probably heard me say this before, the silent person at the budget hearings are the business, are the business owners, especially the large ones. They usually speak by moving out of town. That's when you hear them, when they literally have the moving trucks and the moving vans, and that's when they're heading out. Obviously, it's too late then. So could that reserve number be too high philosophically? Depends on how you got to that number, but
I don't mean now, I just mean in general. Is there a point where you
In a general sense, since you used the word too high, I'll have to say, yeah, probably. I don't know if the mayor wants to.
A hypothetical question, well, of course, some number would be too high, but if you look at the situation we're in, the unknowns, and I just saw today where the Connecticut economy has generally been no more than an increase of three tenths of a percent, the GDP, since two thousand and eight. There are serious problems, so the reserves are there to to avoid rate shock, whether it's tax rate, tax rate shock, or electric rate shock, or water sewer rate shock, that gives us flexibility. Given what we're facing, I wouldn't think it is too high at this point. If things were really great, you know, I mean, businesses moving in town, the grand list increasing by five percent a year, then you could say, well, gee, you know, you don't need reserves that high. But we're along, I mean, we're in a different planet, so I think we all have to be very worried about where we're headed, and the emphasis has to be on reducing expenditures, not trying to find money to basically subsidize something that in the long run, we we just plain can't afford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Bill.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
And thank you, Councilor Shortell.
Mr. Bose. My reading of your summary is that we ended this past budget year with a deficit.
Well, a municipal and a state audit report is really two reports. There's what is called the government GAAP, Generally Accepted Accounting Principles for governmental units such as municipalities, and then there's the budget. So you're you're always, and those two, frankly, they they have some commonality, but they have some pretty widespread differences as well. The official rec, the official reserves, the official balance sheet of the town is on a GAAP basis. Those are the accounting standards established by a professional organization that's semi-financed by Congress to establish accounting standards for reporting, to create continuity and of how transactions are reported externally. Budget, of course, is all internal, internal. Generally Accepted Accounting Principles for Municipalities could care less about budgets. I know that sounds silly, but that is what it is. I see Vinnie waving, shaking, saying he knows, because he's heard me, unfortunately, talk like this from here, you're done. But the only reason frankly why budgetary information is even included as a required part of our audit of financial statements is to demonstrate compliance with local law. Did we, if you went through those pages, sixty-seven through seventy-two, on the expenditure side, and you saw any variance numbers with parentheses, that, excuse me, that means that those are over expended, that means we violated our charter. So frankly, that's really what those budgeted information is in there for. But and and we don't have a choice as to what goes into the audit of financial statements, those are promulgated by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and that's that's the organization to which I was talking about. So with it with that, and I, the GAAP expenditures, for example, include what we spent for appropriations in force. And in in a budget, when we have appropriations in force, those are really expended in the year that you budgeted them, but you but you have to show them as a reserve. That's why, that's the biggest difference. So we had a GAAP deficit of the one point four million, as reported by a couple of the newspapers, and in my summary to you. Now, on a budgetary basis, doing that analysis, also on the four-page summary I sent to you, we actually ended up with revenues exceeding expenditures by, I believe, three hundred and fourteen million dollars. So it wasn't a very large, I'm sorry, thank you, Craig, Mr. Fishmine, three hundred fourteen thousand, I wish it was three hundred fourteen million, three hundred fourteen thousand dollars to the good on a budgetary basis. And if you go through my letter, I tried to help you, because it it's confusing, it's confusing for us. I mean, I I know folks who are several steps away from it, it's even more confusing, and and I I understand that and appreciate it. That's why I I put the page numbers down parenthetically throughout that four-page, throughout that four-page, so you could actually track it yourself and see. I hope that helped, but that's, that was the difference between the two. On a budgetary basis, actual revenues minus actual expenditures, three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to the good.
But when we're looking at our budget every year, we are, we're aware that there are those appropriations in in force, and they're going to carry over, and at some point, that money's going to be spent.
Correct. Because you approve them as part of your budget process, going going into the next fiscal year, and then we wait until the schools, or the last few years, until the schools finish paying all their bills and everything else, and then Sal Menzel comes before you folks with the request for putting some of those funds into the, what is commonly called the one percent fund. That's also part of, that's also an appropriation in force, it's the same thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselors Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. So I'm going to try to keep my questions brief, because I think I've only got a couple, but maybe your answers may end up giving me a little bit more. So the original, I have, I have a separate spreadsheet that I keep, you know I keep it, for all of our budgets and all of the the differences that we've had. Our, the the original budget from that year was a hundred and fifty-eight million, two seventy, but the end, the one we ended up passing, that was a hundred and sixty-three oh nine, correct? Hundred sixty million?
I believe it's a hundred and fifty-eight million for the current year that you're looking at, that audit.
Right.
This this year's that we're in now is a hundred and sixty million.
All right, so so that's why, like, so I'm on, I'll let you know where I'm looking right, I'm on page seventy-two, so it says, original a hundred fifty-eight, two seventy, and then it says final one sixty-three oh nine. I want to make sure I'm, I've got the right numbers in my head when I ask my next question. I I was under the impression that the original delivered was a hundred fifty-eight, we ended up approving once.
Yes, you're correct, but if you wouldn't mind going up a couple more line items, just go up on that same page.
Yeah.
And you'll see the appropriate appropriations in force, one million, five, one, seven. You'll see that there's a zero in the original budget.
Right.
Because those have been budgeted in years past, but it's actually treated as a, an addition to your current year budget, because it's authorized to spend. So that's where most of that money comes from, the difference between the one million, I'm sorry, a hundred fifty-eight point two million, and you add that one point five million. The rest of the difference is a little bit smaller. It's changes to the budget that the council makes with our request to add monies to both, usually both sides of the budget, the revenues and the expenditures, to keep the budget in balance. And I believe that's about half a million dollars. It's in, it's somewhere in that four-page summary.
Yep.
And most of that, you might remember during the year, we had tremendous hiring of our police department for the construction jobs, especially, you know, whether it was the Amtrak job, there was a lot of frontier jobs, and Chief Wright came before you twice, I believe, asking for a couple hundred thousand dollars. So that would be four hundred thousand of that five hundred thousand. The rest were grants and some some small donations and stuff that we received that were not part of, we don't, we do not budget originally, because you don't know if you're going to get them, but that department head then comes and asks you to to appropriate. These are items that we usually refer to as washes, because nobody, tax dollars really are not at play here, but they have to be authorized to spend by the council. So we increased the revenue budget by that amount, and we increased the expenditure amount by that amount.
Okay.
In fact, I think you did it tonight for special duty for our police department as well. So if that's the only change in this year's budget, it'll be a couple hundred thousand dollars higher on both sides.
All right, so then the original number that I had was the correct one, the reason for the difference in that column was for the money you identified.
You're correct.
So still on the same page, all the way over, we've got a positive variance there of four point six million dollars. Can you, can you explain that to me then?
Yes, the four, well, the four point six million, and if I, what I did on my page four, on my four-page summary, was I actually reduced the seven hundred seventy-three thousand that you see there in the variance column, because that only has to do with the appropriations in force, and that's where you come up with the three point, three point eight million dollars, if you will. If you go through every single one of these pages prior to this, you'll see the variance column, and if you go all the way back to page, page sixty-eight, so page sixty-eight through page seventy-two in those variance columns, and I subtracted out those appropriations in force, because I was doing what you did, just to try to stick to comparing as best we could to the hundred fifty-eight million dollar original adopted budget.
So the, so now I I just want to, again, going back to where I keep my own numbers separate, for that budget, we, and I know you like to use the term, we we used four point two million, we took it out of the general fund balance, put it into budget to make it balance. I use the term allocate, because until we spend it, I don't look at it as being used. So so I'll use my language, because it makes me feel more comfortable when I'm speaking to it. In that budget, we allocated four point two million dollars to make the budget balance, is that correct?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
How much of that did we actually spend?
Really don't look at it that way, because it's 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 an allocation to to complete the budget process, and then you'd have to take a look at how everything works, not only, you can't look at just the expenditure side of it, you've got to take a look at the revenue side as well. And once budget is done, and I've said this many years too, frankly, when the budget, when the year is done, what happened in the budget is good for analysis, to see, you know, where you might have missed, where you might have done better, but frankly, it doesn't matter. What matters is what actually happened, and we received revenues that were three hundred twelve thousand or three hundred fourteen thousand dollars more than what we spent. That's what is going to increase the the reserves, or 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 decrease the reserves just for that budgetary, just for those budgetary transactions. If I I could have budgeted a billion dollars of expenditures, and a billion dollars in revenues, and if we received a quarter of a billion dollars in revenues, and we spent two hundred forty-nine million dollars in revenues, in expenditures, we'd have an operating surplus of one million dollars. If it went the other way, we'd have a one million dollar deficit, because you, you know what I mean, the budget from that standpoint does not matter. So let's just take a look at it, if you don't mind me rephrasing your question, and I, please don't take umbrage at it, if we spent every dollar that's in those variance columns, we'd have had a four million dollar deficit. Now, if that's what you mean by your question, then I agree with that.
Well, no, because, I mean, the way, the way that I'm looking at it is, and I and I have some of those numbers, when you were talking to Councilor Shortell about how we used to designate more of those reserves, and we'd been dropping them, there there was definitely a point in time, we were real close to seven million, and
We were at seven point five about thirteen years ago, yeah.
Yeah, well, I I don't go back quite that far, the, I'm, I'm about five, two thousand five, two thousand and six, we're at six point nine, and we actually utilized that year, we spent out of the reserves of that six nine, we actually used one point seven, plug the, to actually plug the hole. So when I look at the general fund balance going up and down on the different years, it's because of what actually gets spent in those reserves. So
That's correct.
I mean, I'll I'll basically call it from the last time we utilized it prior, which was the two thousand nine and ten year, where we've actually utilized, we put in five point eight, we actually used four hundred and six thousand, it was twenty million point two that year. Every other year since then, five million, five point three, four point five, four point three, three years in a row, and then four point two, it went in, we never used it, we moved it out, and then we also took all of the surpluses those years and added them. So just like if you've got twenty million dollars, and you allocate four, you've technically dropped to sixteen, but you really didn't use it, so you go back in to twenty, oh, and there's a hundred thousand left there, so we got twenty point one.
Yep.
So we went from twenty point two, twenty point nine, twenty-two point six, twenty-four point eight, twenty-five point five, twenty-seven point five, twenty-nine point two, and now this year, because of the finished math, we're at twenty-seven point eight. So the way that I look at it, maybe too simplistically, but the way I look at it, we moved four point two in, we moved back eight, we moved back less than we actually took out, because that balance dropped.
Yes, that's correct.
So the way that I look at it, we had four point two to balance, if we had to use every dime, it would have dropped the whole four point two that we balanced.
That's correct.
But what we actually used was one point four.
That's correct.
So that, to me, is more of a number that's digestible for, let's say, the general public. We moved money in from savings, and this year, we actually used it.
And and last year, at the end of two thousand sixteen, we had twenty-nine, and I'm glad you pointed that out, we had twenty-nine point two million in those reserves, including all the designations, and at the end of this year, two thousand seventeen, we had twenty-seven point eight million. So that shows the utilization of it as well. That's why I say it's, it's all in there, it's kind of hard to say, well, did you use it, did you not? You know, it's, and it's also how much more you're designating, or how much less you're designating for your upcoming, for the budget that you folks just adopted, because we used another three million dollars.
I, that's that's another question, because I want to make sure I have the right number for this current budget we're in. Mine that I wrote down here is seven point two, is that what we
That's correct.
All right, so
And and that number of seven point two differs from the seven three three five that you're seeing in the reserves, in what they're calling the assigned, what we call assigned, is for the open purchase orders at year end.
Right.
That, those are both assigned.
So that's, that's another very good point, and I I brought it up, because, because much to your point, you've tried, like, you've because much to your point, you've tried, like you've vindicated and you have been dropping that, but here is a year we had to boost that to make it balance. And, and the task really is to not use it or, or.
That's correct.
Try to bring in the extra income as we use it and so forth, so that, you know, where we've got the wiggle room, we're not, we're not hitting it too hard. Um, those were the only questions I had on that, but Counselor Shortell's question brought up another question for myself and it went back to his question of, you know, at, at budget time, what can we do if we wanted to earmark some of this money if there was a year that we felt like it, it got too much or in, you know, better days ahead or whatever you might want to call it? In a situation where we didn't want to do a placeholder, like we, we, we as the council might know something we might want to set money aside for, whether it be much to his examples, downtown parking or community pool or something like that. If we wanted to put a line item in, we'd have to kind of designate it, we'd have to say with the intent to use for like community pool or some of that. Is it permissible if the town council budgeted it itself, I'll use a round number, like 500,000 dollars, created a budget line for us to spend, like 500,000, and if it got approved, would then it just be a situation of us voting to make a transfer of 250,000 dollars to spend on the pool? Or does it need to be designated at that?
I, I, yeah, we had this conversation with law many years ago, I did. You can't just, with the exception of the contingency line item, if you wanted to build a, a line item, let's say in the town council budget, throw 500,000, just say unallocated or to be allocated, I, I, I don't think that that's gonna pass muster with the charter. However, if you came forward and said, look, can we set up another contingency line item where we transferred during the year, then that, that would be the way to do it.
Okay. It, it just, it was something that, because he mentioned that, I was thinking, you know, if we had a situation, what the best way to go about it? So it sounds to me like that might be more of, of a way to go if we didn't know ahead of time what pet project, for lack of a better way to say, to pick.
And we can even, I can designate that in the revenue side of the budget where we're the utilization of the reserves, half a million council out to be allocated or something like, I'll create something more.
Okay, those, those are, those are really the overall questions that I had, so thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening.
Um, I, I tried to pull it up, but I thought that we could make appropriations to the cap and non-recurring fund. Couldn't, couldn't we appropriate?
If you wanted to do that, I think now is probably a good time of year to do it, to get maybe something in writing to, I would, just, please don't, this is, if, just knowing the way the process works, the way I would do it was I would maybe, uh, through the chairman, send your request to the mayor, Mr. McCully and Mr. Voltramitis, because those are the three folks, especially the public works director and the town engineer, who really have to analyze what they need those funds for, because they're the, you know, the most suited to do it, the most experienced at doing it, that sort of.
Yeah, but procedurally, we would send a request to the mayor, consider appropriating a certain amount from somewhere to cap and non-recurring designated for community pool, by way of example. And then it would.
I think that's the way, I think that's the best way to go. It's clear, there's a nice visible trail there, it's discussed, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, so thank you. Um, I just wanted to talk about the procedure of the audit or ask you just some questions. Do we give them what they want, what they ask for, or do we give them what we want to give them?
Uh, actually both. We give them pretty much a completed, um, set of financial statements. There's a couple things here and there that we are missing because we do not compute the actual information, which is quite a few pages, maybe 20 pages or more, uh, things of that, where we're, we're waiting for an outside third party to provide us information that we need to put in the audit to meet the accounting standard. Uh, so it's, it's most of us, most of this information, we are giving them our financial statements, they're coming in and auditing it. And of course, during the audit, they're, they're coming up with lists of information of things that they wish. So it is, it is a two-way street.
But generally, we determine at the outset what we're gonna give them.
Uh, at, actually, before the audit starts, there's a, a representation letter that, that we have to sign administratively that says, you will give us, and it tells us everything that we have to give them. Now, that's a little bit of a general, uh, which, a general list which could be used for any municipality, but, and then at the end, one of the items I just sent you with the audit, uh, when I sent you the hard copy of the audit a couple weeks back, um, there's a statement on auditing standards, and I hate to keep using all these mnemonics, but, uh, which requires auditors, whether they're doing a municipality or whether they're doing IBM or Home Depot, that they have to communicate that, um, how, basically how, I'm gonna use common, just common English here, basically how things went. Did you get what you needed? Did you get any, did anybody give you any grief? Do you have any suspicions that, that you just can't, you know, see yet? Um, and you guys have that letter because we, I sent that out to you as well. Obviously, it was a good, a, a good letter. If, and if there was anything that came up during the audit, by the way, with you folks being the hiring body, they would contact the chairman and say, you know what, uh, the controller is not giving us this, the mayor is giving us grief about this, uh, we need to call a timeout and stuff and speak with you.
And that's based upon the, the level of the offer and the request, but by way of example, you know, when roadwork is done and we, and the town hires TILCON to, you know, supply materials and perhaps work, perhaps workmanship, does the auditor look at the, the bid document, the contract?
Yes, they would.
Okay.
And now it's on a test basis, so I can't tell you which, which ones they, they test. Bigger ticket items usually generate, um, you know, their, their, their review of a, of a bid project, yes.
And, and do they see all of the accounts of, of the town?
As, what do you mean by the accounts? Do you mean like departments or do you mean like the bookkeeping funds like cap and non and, um, pension fund, et cetera? Yes, they, they audit every, they audit all the funds for the town. I think that's what you mean.
Okay, well, um, let's, let's stay on the cap and non-recurring. Um, they audit the cap and non-recurring?
Yes, it's, it's included in the CAFRA, yes.
And when one audits cap and non-recurring, um, perhaps, you know, what are they looking at? Because there's appropriations in force, there's, you know, there's, um, portions of former projects, what are they looking at?
A cap and non-recurring isn't gonna have appropriations in force in there, but they will, but they will have items that have been budgeted in prior years and not yet spent and or completed, yes.
How is that different from appropriations in force? I mean, it's basically the same thing.
Well, it is, but it's in a different bookkeeping fund. That's what, so appropriations in force are general fund. Cap and non-recurring, because don't forget, general fund by, by state statute and frankly, by general accounting, uh, rules, the general funds lapse at year end. Um, anything that's not in the general fund, um, continues on until the life of that project is done or if there's some other trigger that says, okay, you have X amount of years after appropriation to get this done, or else it's dead.
Yeah, so cap and non-recurring projects stay there and you don't need the procedure of appropriations.
That's correct, yeah.
In order for it to continue.
That's correct.
So essentially, they, they end up in the same place.
Yes.
Um, but you don't need that procedural thing. So last year, you, you sent us a report, uh, July 10, 2017. I had asked you during the budget, um, what was in cap and non-recurring that had not been appropriated?
Yeah.
And you indicated to us at that time, there was 386,000 dollars. Um, that's appropriated, um, some of these projects I'm looking at have been completed, so it's just sitting there basically. I noticed that in, based upon this report also, that in 2012, the remainder of the funds from Simpson Court, 497,795 dollars, was transferred.
That's correct.
That project was anticipated, um, 2009, 2010, right?
I, I, I'm gonna take your word for it.
The referendum was 2010.
I don't have it in front of me, but.
The referendum was 2010.
Okay.
Money would have had it been appropriated beforehand, that's, so you're talking about that, that circa. So that means for three years, um, there was 500,000 dollars in cap and non-recurring that, um, is just sitting there. So I would think an auditor would have said, what is this for? What's the status of the project? Because by then the project is dead, you know, so to speak, with all due respect.
You're correct, it was dead, yeah.
So, but I didn't see any recommendation as far as doing something with that.
They, they, I, I do recall speaking to them about that. Um, what happened with it, I believe it was 497,000 of the 500,000 left, I, I don't know.
497, 795.
Yeah, it was a few thousand, a couple thousand spent on cones or something by the engineering department. But anyway, those funds were actually used, um, in either the next year's cap and non-recurring budget or the year after, I'd have to go back and check, as, uh, because Henry McCully put together his list of roads, John Thompson, then town engineer, put together his projects. And when those funds that were, uh, for Simpson Court were basically killed, we utilized, uh, because during discussions during that budget, the next year's budget process came along as, can we use these 497,000 dollars for other items? Henry had gotten behind a little bit on some roads, there was a few tough winters there. So during the next year's budget process, if you have that budget book, um, and it might be 11, uh.
Well, according to your documents, 2012, 2013.
Yeah.
Which begs the question, during that period of time.
Okay.
Project is virtually dead 2010.
Yeah, what, what we did was we left that, uh, appropriation open till that budget season, then we did a journal entry to kill it because it was authorized in the, we utilized the fund balance of the cap and non-recurring fund, the reserves, if you will, because they were bolstered by that, because we raised the revenue, the 497,000 dollars of revenue in that same year, even though we didn't, uh, expend it.
Okay, no, I understand, I understand where, I understand how, how it was eventually used.
Yeah.
But I question why the.
Why they did not come.
Why wouldn't the auditor say, this money, you know, the project is dead, it could be used perhaps to defray a tax increase? It's 500,000 dollars, a lot of money.
They did discuss it with me to see the authorization in the future year to make sure that we were not spending to 500,000 or the 497,000 dollars. Now, what you're saying now is much more of a, um, they're, they're not gonna make a recommendation that we, we sent half a million, that's not their function. Their function is to determine from a material aspect if our financial statements, um, um, conform to generally accepted accounting principles. Um, they're not there to make a recommendation to say, hey, throw half a million against this to avoid a mill rate.
So just so I understand, general, uh, uh, accepted accounting principles allow for an appropriation to sit in an account for a project that is done? Uh, it's not going to happen, that, that is appropriate.
Yes, yeah, it doesn't, it really doesn't speak to it, but we have our own internal, I believe it's three years in the charter that the, the project has to be started or something expended from there. But we did, we, we actually put a dummy purchase order against that line item. We actually cut a purchase order, made it out to the town of Wallingford, so that we just inadvertently could not pay, uh, anything, a purchase order or bill against that line item until the next fiscal year when we utilized that half a million dollars to do the, um, the, um, uh, additional roads that Mr. McCully put in the budget for cap and non-recurring.
No, once again, I, I understand where it went. I just, I'm.
Yeah, that's really.
Very puzzled why the auditor would not bring that up as some sort of a recommendation in that.
Yeah.
That one-year period that it sat there, because you didn't appropriate it until 2012, 2013. But anyway, is this, the, the version of the audit that we have, was there a draft that the town gets?
We get a draft that we work up pretty good, uh, just to make sure we, we check numbers, we do mathematical, uh, things that make sure that everything works, but we, we do get a draft, yes.
Why?
Would you?
Well, I thought that, I thought the numbers are the numbers are the numbers are the numbers and somebody, a neutral is doing the analysis, why would, why isn't an audit just issued? This is the audit. I mean, I, I don't understand, why would the?
Well, we don't get a draft that's a complete document that you could actually take a look at and do anything with. As they're, as they're completing their work and, you know, we're getting into November, maybe early December at this point in time, we want to make sure that the stuff that's coming out of there, they actually generate, they actually write and report based upon everything that we've given them. So we, we want to make sure that everything is, the columns are aligned, things are spelled correctly, things are the way they should be, et cetera, et cetera. So in that respect, a draft, yes, but a draft that we could actually pass out and discuss is, is, no, we don't get that. We get the audit and then if there's any recommendations or comments, we get them. You know, while at the same time when the audit's complete, we don't get a draft of anything like that.
Is that, I just, I don't know, I just don't, I would think the audit is, I mean, we don't trust the auditor to spell things, I mean, I.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you?
I don't, I don't know why, it just seems like it, the draft version comes to the town that's being, it's like me doing my own evaluation, you know?
No, it's not, it's just, it's, it's a, it's a double check basically, which is coming out of their report and they're, they're coming in sections too as we're, as we're tra, in other words, I, I don't know if you're, maybe you're implying that we, we have some control over telling them, well, we don't like this, change it, and that's not, that's not the case certainly.
Okay, so any draft versions of this audit would just reflect, um, typographical change, no?
Correct.
Material changes?
Correct, that's, that's a good way to put it, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, if I, if I mislead you, let me take a step back, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. Yeah, if, if, um, I don't want to mislead you, thinking that we get a whole nice book here that we can sit and discuss with you before it's issued, no, we don't, we don't get one of those.
Thank you. Counselor Testa.
Thank you. Uh, account for the appropriations in force carryforward. It looks like on page 72, again, the final budgeted amount was 5, 1.5, let's say.
Yep, that's correct.
The actual was 744. Uh, so that meant that in that year, we actually spent 744,000.
So of the carryforward, that's correct.
Which came out of the reserve.
That's correct.
Which is considered committed or assigned?
That's considered, uh, assigned.
So that's of the.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's committed, I apologize.
Committed.
Committed, thank you.
Committed. So we're talking about appropriations in force, that's always the committed section.
Correct.
What I don't quite understand is why? It's counted. Well, at some point or another, we're balancing it against revenues. However, the revenues for that weren't budgeted.
They were budgeted.
Well, from prior years.
That's why I saw.
So they're not new revenues.
Correct. They're, they're in, they're in that portion of the reserves that's committed, that's correct.
I mean, I think a lot of these, well, I know, my questions, public questions, maybe a lot of my colleagues' questions, always end up stemming from the concern about our budget making.
Hmm.
So I understand the importance of using the, the gap.
We have to use.
You have to use gap.
We have to, we have to use gap.
You, you have to use gap. We don't have to use gap.
Correct.
We budget.
Hence, hence, hence the war, hence the war.
So frankly, I only want to talk about budget because that's what we do.
Okay.
Um, and I, I guess the, the, a real simple question would be. When I look at, again, Mr. Cardello points out some, some numbers. And we see that we've, our actuals are not the same as what we budgeted. And it, and then it appears that there's a four or five million dollar variance strictly in what was budgeted. How, how do we get to the point where we all, it looks like we have a deficit? You probably already answered this, but.
On a budgetary basis?
Yeah.
Because you're talking budget only.
Well, honestly, but that's what we do, we budget.
Well, this year we came, we came pretty close um of the year that you're looking at uh with the actual, again, and I know it's hard, but it's almost like you've got to say, okay, well, um, you've got to look at what happened actually. Because at that point in time, as long as we complied with the charter and we did not overspend and not get approval from the council to move monies to cover any of those over expenditures, frankly, that budget report wouldn't even be considered a part of a, a municipal audit report. Because it would be gap and gap and gap only. Uh, budget analysis would be done separately, maybe outside of the official audit, but it wouldn't be part of an audit. And this year, as you saw, you, you've got my.
How does, how does, how do, let's put it this way, when it comes to revenues, because it looks, a lot of what we're talking about seems to explain.
Sure.
Where the, where the expenditure differences are. What's the difference between a gap revenue and a budgeted revenue?
Gap revenues are uh basically, it's, it's, it depends on the ba- the basis of accounting for municipalities is much different than it is for a, a private business.
Right.
For example, uh, let's just take taxes, we all know about taxes. If we receive taxes, um, the bills go out, let's say, June tenth, June fifteenth for the new year, July first, and folks come in and they pay them June twenty-fifth, June twenty-fourth. Now, that's cash in our hand, but it's not revenue to us. It's in, that, that, we actually have to book it as a, we call an, an advanced tax liability because it's, it's not revenue to the new fiscal year to put against a levy, to apply it against a levy uh that, that is in force. So that is one big area where um, you know, revenues are um different in the private sector versus the public sector. Also receivables, um, if you were IBM and you had a couple hundred million dollars or a couple billion dollars in accounts receivable, um, you would set up some type of like um, um, an allowance for the doubtful accounts and, and to keep your balance sheet, remember that uh in your accounting days. Uh municipalities, it's a little bit different, uh, we don't, we don't write those off. Um, so our, uh, until you get to something which is the building's knocked down, we've tra- we've chased them all over the world, we can't find them. And then we go through the process of writing it off. So the um, the receivables are really uh the amounts that we can collect and apply for the next sixty days instead of forever. Um, and the rest is what we call deferred revenue, it's a liability. Whereas IBM would keep those revenues on the books for a long time. Basically because we can't write off a receivable that doesn't come true without hitting a budget year which does not have that in place, it would be illegal. That's, that's, that's the most clear, the most glaring difference.
Is it safe to say that?
I don't know what's safe.
Yeah, when I read page sixty-six, is it safe for me to believe and accept that we actually collected one point seven million dollars more in taxes than we had budgeted? Because that's what it says in the book.
Taxes, interest, past year's taxes and beans, et cetera.
Basically one point eight, but roughly, so it's safe to say that.
That's correct.
So from a strictly budgetary perp- point of view, we budgeted for a hundred and fourteen million dollars in taxes and we brought in a hundred and sixteen plus or minus, about one point eight. Then if I start continuing down all those rows to the rest of the revenues, certainly I see the most glaring uh one point, it looks like.
One point three.
One point three less. And that came from basically a couple of different state sources.
The one, the one point, almost one point four million of uh less revenue uh than we budgeted. Because the actual state cuts by the, the state budget cuts to the municipalities as far as the grants go actually started in the fiscal year you're looking at, sixteen, seventeen. It started in the last part of the year, well after budgets were adopted. And you can see that right with those variances, those negative variances on those revenues, most of them being the school grants. So uh, of course, uh, things accelerated uh for the current year seventeen, eighteen budget process. So we actually received, uh, this is the state telling us when you guys are ready to make your budget that uh we're going to receive X amount of dollars and during the year, due to cuts, we receive one point four million dollars less. Okay, I mean, that's something we have no control over.
So there it is, so about one point eight and on the positive side with taxes, one point four less on the reimbursement from outside sources, if you want to call them that. And it all balances out to the bottom line of about six hundred and fifty thousand in the black.
To the good, that's correct.
That's safe to say from a budgetary perspective?
That's safe, that's correct.
The real number is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Correct, six forty-nine, yep.
All right, and you go to your expenditures, I have to add one thing. It's, I, I'm sure I understand the reason, but it's really confusing when you're looking for a variance on the expenditure side and it's not in parentheses.
Well, it can't be, or else we violate the charter.
That's weird.
Yeah.
They're both negative, but they're both in parentheses. Well, so if you have a negative variance on the expenditure, it's actually a positive thing.
No, that means you overspent your authority.
No, I'm just saying.
Yeah. Correct.
Expenditures are less, but it's coming up as a positive number.
Correct.
Right, yeah, I wasn't just miss, I wasn't just seeing something, okay. So, and then all the expenditures running down, this is where this is where it gets a little confusing too. It looks like we where, where's the four point six, that's where I'm, I'm a little.
You're going, keep going, you'll find it.
Well.
Page seventy-two.
Seventy-two, it says four point six on the, so we spent four point six million less than we budgeted. Yet the number four point six doesn't make sense going across the line. Is that because it's a total, I, I don't understand.
The four point six uh you also includes seven hundred and seventy-three thousand of, for the appropriations enforced that is not spent. So to try to get a better look at budget, you subtract that seventy-seven-three out of that four point six and you end up with something.
Well, but you, no, you included the seven seventy-three, you included the seven forty-four in the other lines balancing all the way down. Like the one fifty-five, six seventy-one.
Yep.
Includes the seven forty-four.
Yep.
So what I'm trying to figure out is, how do you get four million, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand from a, an original of one fifty-eight million, a final of one sixty, an actual of one fifty-six?
If, if you take the one fifty-five, six seventy-one.
Right.
Subtract it from the one sixty-three oh nine, right there on page seventy-two.
That was a silly question, I apologize.
It's okay.
It was looking at me right in the eye. All right, so that's where that comes from. I lost my ability to do math for a moment there, okay. All right. I just. The, using the appropriation enforced expenditure as part of the final balance sheet when it wasn't current year revenues, that, I just have a hard time with that, understanding that.
Well, it's, it's on the balance sheet. Because uh the year before, you spent it, we actually came to the council, said, here's what we, our appropriations enforced are going to be. We're going to add to it when the schools are done with their thing and do you want to, do you approve these or not?
But they weren't, but they weren't part of our budgeting numbers.
They're not part of the original budget, but they are part of the authorization to spend as, and, and the way that um, the only way to really show it in the financial statements is to show it as an additional action by the council. An additional, an additional appropriation, if you will. Because you don't want to put it in that original column, because that's not the original general fund budget. Like Jason, like Mr. Zandry said, it was hundred seventy-eight point two. If you add that one point five million to it, you, then somebody would look at that and say, holy cow, what's, you know, that's not your budget. He's got the spreadsheet, he's, he's got.
Why, yeah, that, that part.
He's got the spreadsheet.
That part I got, it's, I think I, I don't think I worded my question properly, but that's okay, I, I, I got it.
Stop, stop by, feel free, give me a call and stop by and I'll.
Dude.
Or, or you know what?
I just want you to know that.
In all seriousness.
Somehow or another, listening to you had made me unable to do basic subtraction. I embarrassed myself not knowing how to go one fifty, one sixty minus one fifty-five.
I, I, I come from.
Thinking, how to get five.
I come from the corporate world, I come from the corporate world too, and this stuff is uh, this stuff is bizarre.
I know, uh, I literally was looking right at those numbers, I couldn't say it.
If you follow.
Theoretically.
If you follow my summary, it, it does it nicely, nicely for you, but.
That's it, yeah, okay, yeah, if.
Yeah, okay. You didn't even read my summary, I know.
Like, that's gonna happen. One more, if theoretically, hypothetically, however you want to say it.
Yep.
We actually utilize and spend all of the seven point two that's been allocated to this current year budget from the reserve fund, would we expect to see in next year's audit report a fund balance number of about twenty million?
Correct, yes.
That's the, what we should see.
But you're not, yeah, well, that's, i- i- if everything, if everything played out exactly as budgeted, which of course, you know, that's, you're never going to hit a target down the line, that's correct.
And because in effect, or in actuality, however you want to say it, we did spend one point four of it, of this past year's allocation, that's why we said we had a one point four million dollar deficit.
That's correct.
That's why your point is one point four and why others are saying.
Seriously, that's correct, yep, you're, you're correct.
Because even though we budgeted a certain way, when all the other things are taken into account.
That's correct.
We actually spent one point four million dollars more than we expected to.
That's correct.
Or another way of looking at it, we spent one point four of that reserve contribution to the budget.
That's correct.
Or one point four more than we collected in revenues.
Correct.
I'll be darned.
But the revenues frankly were corrected in a pre, were collected in a previous year and available, and available to use last fiscal year.
Right, got it, okay.
It only took about.
And a hundred and sixty minus one fifty-five is five.
Still.
Okay, I understand that too, thank you.
If you would please read my four page summary, it makes me feel.
I read it.
I know you did, I know you did, I know you did.
Just teasing you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your indulgence, certainly.
Counselor Morganstein.
Honestly, I'm taking it all in. Um, so I think I just want to make one simple response to the whole process, which is to say, not only is the town having a difficult time, but so are the residents. And so as we keep it all in mind, we have to really try very hard not to raise taxes this year, people have flat incomes. I, I'm going to be looking more and probably meeting personally with some people to understand, thank you.
We have had counselors um come in after their first audit and if you wish, please contact me and um we can make a, a time to, to come in and just go over the page and how it kind of works out. It's, it is, it is a confusing thing and I'm, and I'm being serious about that, I, I, I don't, I don't envy folks who are several steps away. I really don't.
Thank you.
Yeah, Counselor Fishman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for another bite at the apple. Um, I first of all want to thank Counselor Shertel for um asking this beyond the agenda. I've, I've learned some things tonight, so um, just the appropriations enforced situation. If we have a, a project that's, it's appropriated, let's say in, in last year's budget and then um we, well, it would be the year before, and then it wasn't done and then in last year's budget, we approved it as an appropriations enforced. When does that particular project get audited?
When it's expended, number one, and also number two, the reserve, when it, when it shows up as part of the reserves. In other words, uh, as part of that committed fund balance. The auditors, uh, I know because I, I had to print it out for them this year, uh, asked for just how we came up with that number that we brought to you folks at budget time to be approval because it doesn't match. Okay, and the reason why it doesn't match is because the mayor's budget is due to the council, April first, give or take. We have to have those numbers ready for the mayor's budget presentation to the council. You folks, after the budget hearings, the budget meetings have in the past authorized that. Well, those, those things don't stop on a dime, we keep going and the amount that you are approving in the budget in May for appropriations enforced is the maximum budget, but it's actually lower than what, what we actually carry forward as an appropriate appropriation force and listed in those reserves is lower because we've been spending them through June thirtieth. Then June thirtieth, we shut the door and we say, okay, the council approved, um, let's say half a million dollar, well, let's say eight hundred thousand because seven hundred would have been from the school board and that wasn't available yet, that number. But uh, we had eight hundred, um, you, you folks maybe at the council on page eighty-nine of the budget book or something like that, waiting in back. You would, let's say the council, the mayor of the council approved a million dollars. Come June thirtieth, there's only eight hundred thousand left in those items because we've spent two hundred from, let's say, March thirty-first to June thirtieth, so we only bring forward the balances that are left and we run our reports for the auditors, because obviously they, they, they audit those reserve numbers uh very, very, very closely.
So just to bring it back to um, and, and let's switch it from appropriation of force to cap and non recurring, which is probably easier to work with because you don't have that procedural vehicle. In the cap and non recurring and has been in the cap and non recurring for a few years now.
What is, what project is that?
Um, I'm going to tell you the.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you mentioned, I, twenty-five percent hearing and I left there, so I, I gotta.
In the cap and non recurring uh account, it has been for a few years now, is a ten thousand dollar appropriation for a bus stop at Walmart. So let's just say that, um, well, first of all, the money is still there to be utilized and let's say next year, that money is, is spent at seventy-five hundred dollars. The auditor is going to get um proof of the, the payment, we know the money is there.
That's correct.
And they're going to ask for, you know, what bids or whatever is part of that process?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Was that, if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Fishman, was that the same before from that July?
Yes, sir.
Looking for, okay, because what we've done is we've actually gone through a few of those, I believe, and um the ones that are expired and or that we were not going through with, or maybe uh, like you said, was mostly spent and maybe had a little tad left. We go through those with Mr. McCully, Mr. Ultra Midas, uh, that we, we literally sit down and have a meeting with them. Usually in the fall, after all, our old year bills are paid and we have a nice clean report. And they'll say, okay, yeah, we're, we're done with these, we're done with these, we're done with these, and then we close them out. So it can no longer be spent, just to let you know.
Can I just, based upon that, so when you say you close them out, um, what do you do? Because my reading of the ordinance that governs cap and non recurring is that once it's there, except by our, our approval.
Correct.
It stays there.
It stays there until it's completed and once it's completed, let's say it comes in, like you said, the ten thousand. Let's say we spend nine on it and the, and the project is done, it's completed, all bills are paid. We, we normally give it a, you know, a little period to cool off just to make sure there's nothing else outstanding on it. Ninety-nine percent of the time, there's not. And then we will sit there and we will actually uh make a journal entry to close the rest of that thousand dollars so that we don't spend it. And then what happens at the end of the year, now that money is uh included in the reserves of the capital non recurring fund because it wasn't spent. That, that process is somewhat similar to the general fund, where it ends up. And then that can be appropriated in the future by the council through the budget process or through uh, or through um, you know, a supplemental appropriation during the year if we needed it. We do have part of a, so part of those reserves, because we don't spend every, uh, again, uh, if, if Mr. McCully puts up a million dollars in next year's cap and non recurring budget uh to do the listing of roads that he provides and he spends nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand of it, we, we get, that two thousand dollars doesn't stay here, there for him to continue to spend because his authority to spend that million is on this list of roads. Okay, and when he's done with those roads, he can't say, jeez, I like to spend it on some, you know, uh, a manhole somewhere. Two thousand is not going to buy him much anyway, so we closed that, when we closed the books that year. And then those show up in the reserves of the cap and non recurring fund, which we can use with the council's authorization to uh, what, what the town has normally done, they've waited four or five, six years and they've come up with a balance and let McCully try to catch up with some of those roads for a couple hundred thousand dollars. The, the, just the reserves are not that much, I don't want you to think there's millions in there because there isn't. Uh, unless we had a special case like, like you mentioned before, the, the Simpson Court, that was kind of a special case. We had a half a million dollars almost and we knew that the town was dead by, by the referendum. So the ne- the next year or the year after that, McCully needed to catch up on some roads. So we brought that to the council through the budget process and that was all approved.
And that's the only, I don't ever recall having a transfer from cap and non recurring um or to anywhere else.
We know, I don't, you know, I don't think we did either, uh, I think your, your memory is probably.
I noticed, I noticed from that chart also, there's two entries that say North Branford Road Phase Two.
Okay, that one could be design and one could be construction. Yeah, we're, we're limited to the number of letters we could actually get to the descriptor fields in that software package, but.
Okay, I think there.
Yeah.
I'm not going to argue about the room, but I think there's.
That's fair.
Um, but anyway, there's twenty-nine thousand dollars there for that project that was over with a while ago.
Okay.
So.
I'll see if it's closed out, so I, I just, I wrote.
Thank you, I don't want to belabor, thank you.
I know, I know, it is, no, it's a procedural thing and it's a, it's, it's important, I, I thank you for the question.
There's nothing else on the council, go to the public, Mr. Joyce.
Bob Gloros Longhill wrote, this is to Attorney Fishman's questions on the auditor. This is why it's important that every few years you do change your auditor and you just don't keep getting a bid waiver. You get new. You get new set of eyes on the budget. They see these numbers sitting there and they say, well, why are these sitting here? Nothing against the orders we're using, but they see the same thing year after year. They become complacent, in my opinion, where if you have new auditors, they're gonna ask those questions. They're gonna bring them up to you. And that way you can see how things are done, and they can put a new set of eyes on it. And that's why it's important, and hopefully next time you will go out with a new bid and get a new auditor. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't disagree entirely with, with, with Bob on that because Bob makes a couple good points. But there's, there comes a, we, we do it with you folks asking us, whereas we didn't maybe go out to a hardcore bid, we certainly have some pricing and some other information from the CPAs over the last few years, number one. So I don't want you to think that we're just, especially I know Mrs. Morganstein's new, that we just hand them a contract as we know. And the second point I'll make, and hopefully Bob takes this into account, or takes this to heart, just this past, or last year, actually, last year's audit, the team totally switches. This firm is large enough where they have enough municipal experienced auditors to actually change the partner in charge, the manager in charge, the engagement, and a couple of the staff. We, we, it was a total turnover over the last two years. They don't do it all in the same year, they'll stagger them. So that you're getting different sets of eyes, especially at the partner and the manager level on what's happening with the engagement. So it's, it's, it does work, seem to work. But, you know, it's, that'd be the council's call if you choose to, to, to make a change, we wouldn't have a problem with that. We, you know, we're good at it.
Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, and, and I agree with him, except for that it's still the same company, and it's not a new set of eyes. It's new set of eyes, it's a new person, but it's the same company. Somebody else, a new company, Company A versus Company B. B's, A's been doing it. B's gonna look at it with a new set of eyes, new vigor, and they're really gonna go over the books. A's coming in, hey, we've, we've looked at, read your, they're looking at the past reviews because they look at the past reports.
Sure they do.
What's written up. They see that you've been compliant, so this is why it's important that you, hopefully, I don't know when this contract's up, but when it's up, and there's nothing, it's just the point of, I'm not saying anything's wrong. I'm saying you should go out to bid and let somebody else come in, new set of eyes. Corporations do it all the time. 160 million dollar budget, the town should do it also.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, and I, I, I wasn't interpreting your, your thing as saying anything was wrong, just for the record.
Mr. Chardullo.
Al Chardullo, 2 Bayberry Drive. I just want to focus on fiscal year 1617, which was the original point that I was making with you, Mr. Chairman. The fact that we've, we inflated the expenses and we underestimated the revenues. And I, I was unaware of the fact that there was a handout for this. I called, I didn't know you had a summary. I thought you were actually looking at the audit report. Is that correct?
The summary was published with the, well, we received the summary with the audit. The summary, is the summary on the website too?
No, no, I don't believe it is. I have a summary of.
No, it's too late now. Jim, I, I, you know, I would like to have it, to have it, so I can comment about it. But that's fine, I'll use the audit report. The other thing I'll say is about this is that it's obviously very difficult to talk about performance to budget looking at an audit report because you're mixing gap and, as we, as we heard, back and forth. It's almost impossible to, to follow it, but I think there's enough information here in these pages I reference to support the point of view I made. Simply stated, we had a budget. I got it right here. Fiscal 1617 budget of 158,270 for expenses. That was the approved budget by this council. If you look at page 72 on the audit report, it shows the original budget, 158,270. Now, there's this other line item in here, this other line called final, which I understand gets into gap because you have to put in the appropriations in force and so forth. But that has nothing to do with the budget. I'm focusing on the budget. Those appropriations in force is just expenditures that were already approved in previous years. Have nothing to do with last year and what you approved for a tax increase. So we had 158,270, and we spent, according to this, 155, 671. Now, what I did was I backed out, if you back out the appropriations in force, which was 744, you get 154,927 because the appropriation in force is history. Has nothing to do with the budget. So we had a budget of 158,270, we spent 154,927. We underspent by $3,343. Would you agree with that? It's just right here.
If you're saying those, if, if you're asking me to agree to that limited statement.
What's that?
If you're asking me to agree to that limited statement.
Well, no, it's the audit report, I'm quoting, okay.
That would be, if you're looking at that line, that's what that line says.
Well, okay, and, and that's what that means. We spent, we underspent by 3, 3, 4, 3.
Yeah, that's, that, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that's correct, it's close, yeah.
Okay, that's as far as we need to go. It's correct, it's close. Maybe it's 50K off or something. Okay, so then, let's go to the revenue line. Again, we had a, the revenue budget was 158,270 in order to balance. Now, 4.2 of that, the town allocated from reserves, right? But it was still, the, the administration came to the council and said, we're gonna spend 158,270, and I want you to approve a tax increase. And by the way, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw in 4.2. Now, the only reason I believe, I don't think they should be throwing in 4.2. If they need 158, they could have asked you for an extra 4.2 million in taxes. But instead, they, they said, hey, we're gonna take 4.2 million out to come up with 158,200. If you look at how we ended, revenue, actual revenue, was 155, 241. All right? They don't show the 4.2 in this audit report.
Because it's not collected.
It doesn't matter, that was part of the budget. 158,270 was the budget that justified the tax increase. So you should put it in there for comparison purposes. You do it on the expense side. So we ended up with 1.171 million more than the 158,270. So you add the two together, that's, I don't know, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4. The point is, we use none of the 4.2. We never use any of that money. And that's a, that's a problem. And we're gonna have the same problem this year because we're doing the same thing. So it's a problem. We are inflating expenses. And, you know, I'm not accusing anybody of doing this consciously. It's an inflated number. And we've done it six years in a row because I only went back six years. Maybe we've been doing it forever. So what we do is we put the 4.2 back in the fund balance, back into general fund. Plus, if we have any extra money, that goes into the general fund too. And take it one step further. Eventually, what we do is we transition that money into purchases either through the cap non-recurring or just paying cash for capital, large capital projects, which is another issue that, for another time, maybe. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? There being none, on to item 7. Which is to schedule a workshop for interviews. I hope we brought calendars. I was going to withdraw this item as I was led to believe that there are fewer applicants than there are openings, but that remains to be finally determined. So we should go ahead and schedule, and in, in the event that we do not have more applicants than openings, then we can cancel that workshop.
Mr. Chairman, does it make sense to try to schedule this in the same night as item 8?
My concern is that that could turn into a very long night. If, if there are, I had thought we had six applicants. Then I thought today we had four, and then maybe we have nine. So, which again, remains to be seen. So I, I'm just, if, if the council's preference is to schedule all of this in one night, I'm not necessarily opposed. I, I just, I was under the information that we had a lot of candidates to interview, so.
I mean, I, I totally get that. I think my only, I, I would take, personally, I would take one long night over two nights out. But that's just me, and I, I'll go to the, with the will of the council, I just.
That's fine.
I, I vote on that for the 27th since I think I'm gonna miss it because of work travel.
Well, then we're not going with the 27th.
Well, are we talking about a separate day, or are we talking about doing it on the 27th?
Well, it, it seems that there is a preference to do everything on one night. I'm gonna start by suggesting Thursday, February 1st. Let me just hear if that works for everybody.
I cannot do that.
It's hard for me.
Okay. We do not have a meeting on Tuesday, February 6th?
I'm sorry.
I like Tuesday the 6th better than Thursday. Or Tuesday the 30th?
There is no Tuesday the 30th.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just, I want, to be clear, I'm looking at dates before the next council meeting.
Oh.
Because I would like to put the result of the interviews and the result of the rules workshop on the next council agenda.
So Tuesday, the 30th of January?
Yes.
Or Tuesday, the 6th of February?
Can, I know the last time we did the WHA appointments, we voted that night. So, you know, I don't know if that's possible to, to do that.
We could, we could consider that.
Is there a time before February 1st?
Tuesday, January 30th.
Or the 23rd.
I can do the 30th.
30th works.
All right, I am hearing that Tuesday, the 30th of January works, so we will put both items on the agenda for that evening and bring snacks and sleeping bag.
Do you guys, 6:30 or 6 o'clock?
Why don't you make it 6 o'clock?
Oh, I like that, 6 o'clock, the 30th.
So that will take care of items 7 and 8.
Okay.
You may.
Am I to expect that the clerk is gonna reach out to the individuals who have shown interest?
I, I think we could expect that.